Well, I'll call the meeting to order officially at 10:06 on Thursday, December 3. We do want to note that Commissioner Higgins is in attendance at the 911 statewide advisory board and is not able to join us today for these meetings. But we do want to offer the opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda at this point. We'd be more than happy if you'd like to unmute yourself and offer comments and we'll give you five minutes to discuss anything you'd like here today. So at this time, we will offer the opportunity to offer any public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to offer any public comment for items not on the agenda? And if somebody would want to mute, if somebody's calling in from the phone and would want to unmute themselves, how would they go about doing that? Chad or Natalie, do we know how they would do that? Do they hit a specific button?
Yes, at the bottom of their blue jean screen, there's a little microphone. And if it has a slash through it, they're muted. If it is like lit white, they're unmuted.
And what if they're just calling in? If they're just calling in through like a phone number? In terms of, you know, just dialing in, if it's not at the app, do we know how they would unmute themselves? Meaning, we might have muted them or...
Either pressing pound four or star four, they should be able to unmute.
Okay.
I believe.
Fantastic. Okay, so if anybody would like to make, we just want to make sure people are given the opportunity for public comment. If you dialed in and you are not connected through the app or the website, you can do star four or star or pound four, and that would unmute you and you can offer a public comment at this time. So we'll give a few seconds for anybody who'd like to do that then. Okay, we just, I just saw some phone numbers that we did not, we haven't seen typically. So, okay. All right, so there's no public comment for items not appearing on the agenda. We will go forward with our agenda at this point. We will look for a motion to approve the minutes from Thursday, November 19th, our Board of Commissioners meeting. And Commissioner, if you, Dershowitz, if you do the honors of doing the motions, I'd be happy to second.
Mark's not there.
No, Mark is at the 911 statewide.
All right, well, I will make the motion, yes.
Okay, I will second the motion for the minutes from two weeks ago. Any further discussion on that? Any changes to the minutes?
None.
Hearing none? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Going into COVID-19 planning and response, we have a discussion on a, and potential action on a leave directive. And this would be for the use of leave by employees during specific and unique circumstances. So I'm not sure who will discuss this, if it'll be Margaret or we'll turn it over to you first, Margaret.
Well, I'll start and then turn it over to Kristen, I believe, Kristen. Yes, I see Kristen, great. So just for some context, in April, the Board of Commissioners adopted a COVID-19 leave directed to assist our employees with understanding how to utilize time during the COVID-19 pandemic. And based on some, as this has evolved and we have learned more, there are some small adjustments and revisions that we would like to propose to the board. And I'll have Kristen just highlight those for you.
Morning, everyone. The draft policy, which I believe went out, there were some minor changes, which included, including Krista as a contact for any leave, COVID diagnosis, for contact tracing purposes, that they should not only contact human resources, but also risk management. And this also gave them more than one avenue to reach out to if they did have the situation. The second was just to clarify a few things. We, the federal regulations came through very quickly, so we responded very quickly with our policy. Since then, we've hit some road bumps that we wanted to make sure we could clearly define so that it was much more clear for employees, such as a medical provider has to provide a release to return to work, that they, if an employee goes for a test on their own for voluntarily, not directed by a doctor, that's not really a COVID medical leave, that's you're getting a test because you want to test, not because your doctor is directing you to do so. So that's a different situation. And if an employee goes beyond the allotted amount of time, per the federal regulations, it has been limited to 10 days. We have along the line made exceptions to that, as we said we would if someone was really sick. We want to sort of formalize that process so that if someone goes over that 10 days, the board's aware of it and they can decide if they want to. I mean, we clearly don't want someone coming back when they have it, but it may be a, instead of us giving them this paid leave unending, instead allow, making them use their sick time or other time they may have available. I'm looking to see here what the other changes were. If an employee receives a negative test result, we've had employees that their doctor put them out for COVID, they suspected COVID, had the test, the test comes back negative. At that point, they're off of the COVID medical leave. If they're still sick, it transitions over to sick time. We wanted to define that in the policy because it's, it's been cleared that it's not COVID, so therefore it should not be COVID medical leave. And as I stated, anyone that elects to voluntary test for COVID without doctor's orders are required to use their paid absence time and are not eligible for COVID leave unless they then receive a positive test. And from that point forward, it would be COVID leave. So we just were trying to define it. We've had some people we feel may be trying to use this to their advantage and taking more time than they may necessarily need or more often than they need just because they want to go get a test done. So we're just trying to more clearly define what qualifies as a COVID medical leave. If there's any questions on it, I can certainly answer them.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Any question, Commissioner Dershowitz, any questions on this, thoughts?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right. My only question was in terms of the CDC's new guidance in terms of shortening the quarantine period for specific individuals that do not show any sign of the COVID-19, they're recommending that it can be shortened instead of 14 days to a shorter stay or shorter quarantine. Do we want to add that in? Just because if we would have anybody who is currently on quarantine that did not show symptoms, it would be good to get them back to work sooner if they are needed in terms of, you know, our correctional facility, 911, any other offices, you know, that are really critical, CYS, I mean, every office is critical, but in terms of that are actually in the building needing to come in. And if they're on quarantine, obviously they can be doing some work at home if they don't have any symptoms. So I, would that be, could we do that today or is that, would that be a different policy that we'd be looking at?
The CDC just came out with those new, the new definition of quarantine, I believe, was it formalized yesterday perhaps? So we do need, yes, maybe Monday even, Tuesday. But we do need to take a look at the definition in terms of days of time for quarantine. I would agree with that. And maybe what we need to be doing is also including some reference to the CDC definition. I think there was a definition, we have a definitions segment section here.
We did not, we did not on this policy have a definitions section because this was more of a directive than a policy. We don't reference the number of days a person has to be quarantined in this policy. We normally go by what the doctor is saying or Krista thankfully has been kept up to date on all these CDC quarantine guidelines and helps us with how long a person is going to have to be quarantined for. When she and Margaret discuss it pretty much with every case to decide. And so that's how we know. So going forward, then of course, we'd adjust that based on any new guidelines that came out. But we don't define in this specific policy, the number of days someone has to quarantine. We just tell them what types of leave, payment, availability there is.
That answers.
Commissioner, you had something, I'm sorry. I didn't, Steve, yeah, did you have something on that, Steve? I think, I think we all jumped in.
No, I'm good. No, I'm good. If the, if the policy doesn't state a particular number of days, I'm fine with just approving it and getting moving forward.
Okay, yeah, I think it sounds like what the policy is basically is, it sounds like whatever the CDC recommends, we are doing. And we didn't, we didn't, you know, we didn't specify a number. So as long as we're, as long as we are reflecting the guidance that's out there, I think it sounds like we're good to go. And it might be only a few people who are affected by this at this point, but as we see more cases and more potential for exposure, I just think it's important for us to do that. So, okay, so it sounds like we're good, we're good on that. We can basically look over the guidance from the CDC and update that as need be. Yes, Margaret?
Commissioner, I would comment about the COVID-19 personal travel policy that was revised and approved on Tuesday of this week because that policy does contain a definition of quarantine for 14 days because we picked up the language from the state. So we may in fact need to go back to that one and to be consistent with CDC and then once the state changes to be in line with the CDC, we may need to go back to that one. But that one will need to be adjusted.
Well, I think, I think we might even have the consensus to do that right now to adjust that per CDC guidance. And we can, we could take it as a brief motion just to update that travel policy.
That'd be great.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that, Commissioner?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll make, I can make the motion to update the travel policy to reflect current CDC guidance.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. And I'm just thinking for some people who might have traveled over the holidays to see folks, this would allow them to come back a little bit sooner if need be. So just helps them out. All right, great. Any further discussion on that change?
Okay.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And then specifically on this directive, the, the new one, do you need an action on this for this new update, which would be for the leave directive?
Yes, we need approval of the new leave directive.
Okay, all right, is there a motion to that effect?
No move.
I will second it. Any final discussion, comments, questions on that from anybody? Okay, we are seeing none. All in favor, do so then by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have updated that leave directive. Thank you, Kristen. Thank you, Margaret. We then are moving into the funding for our businesses, some business grants, and we will turn it over to Mary Kay to discuss this and update us on where we're at. Good morning, Mary Kay.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. I appreciate it. We are, we're, you know, coming down the home stretch here with our grant. And we are presenting to the, pleased to, pleased that we are presenting 28 additional small businesses that will receive funding up to $5,000. And we, today, after 1 o'clock, we will be sending out with the help of Chad Joyce, who has been amazing support and help. He's going to be sending the notifications out to the 28 who received the funding and they just have to download their agreement, send it back to us. And there were also some businesses that, this was from our, our first round of businesses, our first phase that we had. There are some businesses that are not eligible based on the fact that they actually were in a growth mode and it could have been from receiving other CARES Act funding. I will be sending out letters to all of those businesses that were not eligible based on the US Treasury or DCED funding, so they know that. So this will pretty much wrap up the small business portion of the grant. Very excited about it. And also, please want to thank the Commissioners for being great support of the Santa County community, small businesses, as well as the Council's Office. The Basin team has just gotten these checks, I believe, in record speed because there were a lot. And then Kim Stane from ZA, and also Jessica Heron has helped us out. So I do just want to present also some gratitude for people who have really helped with this really fantastic process. And I can't go without thanking Margaret because she has really steadied the ship a lot of the way. So I would like to please ask for approval for those businesses.
Thank you.
No move.
All right, I will second that. A enthusiastic motion and second, I think we're both, all three Commissioners echo all the thanks. And we know these businesses, we've asked them to sort of do this second dance here. And so we appreciate all the work that they've done and it just, we wanted to make sure they helped. Our economy is unique where we did have a lot of individual businesses get the CARES Act directly from the, through the PPP. And we wanted to make sure that if they did see a downturn due to not having football, not having that really robust fall that we typically have here, that they could still capture some grant money and we did that. So big kudos. I hope they get the money quickly and I know that we've been doing that very quickly, but thanks again on that. So super. Any, any comments, any questions, final discussion on this? We, we have a few folks on the line, just want to make sure if there was any businesses potentially who had any questions or whatnot, be happy to take, take those at the time. Okay, we are seeing and hearing none and we will then call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, great, thanks again, Mary Kay.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
We have at this time, our first item under personnel items for the Commissioners is for the consideration of correctional facility. We have five items. And just to double check, again, we've got numerous phone numbers on here. Is our warden or anybody from the correctional facility with us today? Okay, seeing no one. Run through these quickly. We have a personnel requisition for a full-time CO. We, is that somebody there? Sorry. Okay, no worries. We have the appointment of Mackenzie Rierich, part-time CO. We also have the appointment of Victoria Shivery, part-time CO, Shannon Meeker, part-time CO, and then also Joseph Smith, part-time CO at the facility. We have those five items, we'd look for a motion to approve them.
No move.
I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Turn this next item over. Well, not, well, yeah, this is a, this would be a, I guess, a retro for the personnel requisition for our Assistant Director for 911. And I guess this is just maybe just cleaning things up. But I think, didn't we hire, didn't we hire this, I'm sorry. Oh, no, no, I'm so sorry. Okay, I'm mixing this.
Yeah, we're playing norm now.
That's right, that's right. Right, so at, at the Tuesday Commissioner meeting, we had announced that Norm Spackman would be our next Director of 911. And hey, hey Dale, hey, you're still here for a few more days, we can maybe give this to you. What do you? Yeah, so we've got an item on the agenda for 911 and we'd love to hear more from you.
Yeah, effective 11 of 21, Norm will become the new Director. So we'll need to fill the, the vacant position of Assistant Director. So today's item is, is asking the Board to consider filling that spot and then we'll undertake to find someone to fill the spot and recommend that person at a future date.
Well done, thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, I appreciate it. Okay. Any further discussion on this, comments, questions? Okay, we'll look for a motion to approve.
No move.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, thank you Dale, very much. Under Human Services, we do have one item for, for Aging and we do have Ken Pendleton with us. Ken, if you'd like to take it from here.
Ken, you're muted.
I'm muted, okay, sorry.
No, you're okay, you're good, you're all good.
I am.
You were, you were muted, but now you're not, you're all good.
Okay. Yeah, this is, this is our position that we've opened for our secretarial receptionist position. This is a budget neutral addition to our budget for the next year. It represents a more representative job description for the task that is actually being completed at the beginning or at the front of our offices. And subject to approval today, we're looking to start this person potentially on Monday morning.
Okay, thank you, Ken. So just to speak briefly to, to Ms. Manchester, she was working with us very closely at the Satellite Voting Center at the, at the BJC. In addition, she was instrumental in helping us out during the final week, preparing a lot of items for the Elections Office in terms of a lot of the things that we were doing during that final stretch. So she was great. So it's exciting to see her transition from that position to this one. And I would have no issues with, with getting her in there on Monday. Again, she's been oriented by HR, knows the drill with, with the county and I think it would be a great fit. So just to, just to throw a plug in there for her, but I'd have no issue with a Monday start. Commissioner Dershowitz, any thoughts?
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Okay, fantastic, okay, fantastic, okay. We look then for a motion to approve.
No move.
I will second that, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you so much, Ken, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, for our MHID office, we do have the consideration of the approval of a personnel requisition for a full-time caseworker too in that office. And we would be doing this retro to November 20th. Would there be a motion for that?
No move.
And I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. Report on Personnel Items for the Judiciary. We have the President Judge has approved the Personnel Requisition for a Full-Time Department Clerk III, a Court of Administration, and also a personnel requisition for Full-Time Office Supervisor II in Judge Lockman's office. We will go down to the Request for Proposals for our capital project and this would be the recommendation of a contract award for the RFP for the camera system. And we will, I believe, turn it over to Margaret for some introduction on this. And just to, in terms of the timing of this, Margaret, if you could maybe recap that just to refresh everybody and we'll turn it over to you.
All right, thanks very much. For some time now, there has been an ad hoc camera committee comprised of several of our department heads and they have worked to put together a really robust RFP about the county's needs for camera around security. I'm going to turn this over to Chad, who's been taking the group through the last phase of the process. And then also we have some other individuals who have been working with him on the project who will provide some programmatic information as well. So we can do this quickly, but the, the RFP proposals were presented to this, to you two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, the committee has reviewed them and they're ready to make their recommendations to you now.
And if I could just ask a very quick question, this is the first IF, I'm sorry, yeah, the IF, this is a RFP, not an IFB. So in an RFP, we have made the decision that we would segment the proposal from the cost. And, okay, and to my recollection, we haven't opened the cost yet. And so in terms of what that process looks like, because there, we, again, with an IFB, we'll open them up simultaneously. But in terms of when the cost becomes a factor in this, if we could just review that and if Chad was going to do that, great, I just wanted to make sure that that was out there.
So let me just clarify that point before he goes on. The committee evaluates the proposals without the cost first. They have a weighting grid of criteria that they use to evaluate the proposals, whether it's, you know, two proposals or 10 proposals. After that is finished, they open up the sealed costs and review that cost, the cost portion against how they've weighted it qualitatively. So there's a qualitative component and a quantitative component. And based on those two pieces, which the committee has now looked at and has been reviewed with me, their findings, their recommendations as well, we're bringing that to you today and Chad can speak to what the recommendation looks like. But that's an important point because in the RFP, the qualitative pieces is primary and done first.
Thank you.
Is there a question?
It does, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so Chad, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you. As Margaret mentioned, we, we received two proposals and the committee interviewed each company and then conducted an internal review. The selection process followed the ratings criteria that we listed in the RFP and that criteria consisted of resource commitment, qualification of personnel, past performance, quality and feasibility, technical and organizational approach, and proposal content format. During our review period, we reviewed all of those and came to a recommendation and then we looked at the cost submittal and our recommendation for that, using the criteria, is that we are recommending that the county enter contract negotiations with Watkins Security. The proposed system uses American-made hardware and is on the same platform as our door access and panic button systems. It will provide the county a robust surveillance and recording process powered by the latest technology and driven by analytics to drastically reduce the amount of time spent searching for incidents. Analytics includes searching for video from a database by color of shirt, color of car, a license plate. It also has learning capabilities to detect anomalies. So for example, the, the system will be able to alert the sheriff if a vehicle is driving in the wrong direction or someone enters a building at an unusual time or an unusual place such as a rooftop. It can even detect an unusual sound such as a gunshot. And the sheriff can receive a real-time alert and he'll be able, one of his deputies will be able to view from a desktop, laptop, tablet, or smartphone from any location that he's at. So I can turn it over to Brian, our sheriff, to help, you know, elaborator at his commentary and Dale as well.
I just wanted to add that, as to the other bidder, the integration with the door access system is very clean with this vendor. Again, we mentioned the cams are made in the United States as opposed to Pacific Rim. The vendor that we have or are recommending has a history, history of timely response to service requests and the ease of the unit, of the interface and the user interface and the, this strong suit of analytics. From the very beginning, what happened at the courthouse two years ago made strong analytics a necessity for any new system that we would purchase. That, that was something that we started out with as a tenant from, from the get-go and this vendor and their, their equipment that they are offering provides that. So I'm, I feel it's a very strong recommendation and I'm very satisfied with the result.
Thank you very much, Dale. And Brian as well, if Brian wanted to add any comments to that? And Brian is, he's on the phone, I know he's here, so maybe we'll try. Brian, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
We can, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. All right, yeah, I tried to come on there earlier, but I agree with everything Dale said and Chad. We did an exhausted just an exhausted search of everything, and the way the systems integrate together is very beneficial. I don't know why I'm having all this reverb. I disagree with everything they said. And the price point after we opened it was even more on point. So I disagree with that.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, that echo, not sure why that's coming through like that. But yeah, no, you essentially, after we procure this and we go forward with the project, you're really going to be the main driver or the main user of this system. And so it's important that you've got buy-in and feel comfortable with this. Obviously, non-one, Chad are going to be interfacing with this at a certain point, but really, the sheriff's office is really going to be utilizing this. So the fact that you're comfortable with it, you know, believe in it is important. So it's great, great. Are there any other committee members, Chad, that would want to jump in and add their take on this?
I do not see any additional on the meeting at this right now.
Okay, all right.
I think I fixed reverb problem here. If I might just jump back in.
You sound great. Go ahead, please.
Okay, sorry about that. That was kind of having me all in a loop. I was trying to talk. I think the system we're going to get through Watkins, either would have been a great system, but Watkins' display of it and shows the user friendliness of it really enhanced their product to us. All the analyticals we can do in the, we've had several instances at the courthouse going back probably 10 years to the first van of being, having acid thrown in the, you know, someone running into the back of the building. So I think the coverage they're going to give us and all the analytics they can do to text stuff and motions and stuff like that, I think is very beneficial for us. And it can integrate with the system, the door system, the car reader system, which is beneficial in every way possible. They did a great presentation, and it just seemed user-friendly for us in the way we can use things here in our office.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff Sampson. Appreciate that very much. No, it sounds like a fantastic system. In terms of cost, it would be good to appreciate that or notate that. We don't necessarily want to, I mean, we want to have us go into contract negotiations in the strongest.
Is there anybody there?
Yes. Steve, can you hear us? Sorry.
Yeah, somehow I just, everything went dead.
Oh, really? Okay. Can you hear me? All right.
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Oh, sorry. Oh, oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay. So Brian, did you hear Brian's summary or what he had said? And that's, Brian was just talking through some of the, from his vantage point, sounds like a great system. And I was just going to offer that if we go into contract negotiations, we would want to go in a very strong position. But it's important to appreciate the cost or at least what they're putting on the table. And it sounds like there might be some legacy costs or some, at least some trailing costs where this wouldn't, or maybe it is just a one-time fee, and we just, you know, licenses are put in there, warranty, upgrades are all put in. But it would be helpful to know that, but also, you know, want to make sure we're going into contract, because contract negotiations may change that price potentially, or there might be some different features we'd like to change or add or delete or subtract. So if you, can you offer any cost perspective at this point or picture what that would look like? Oh, Margaret, sorry, you're muted. Sorry. It's okay.
I'm going to jump in and say, and Chad has, I believe, a screen share, but there are options for you to consider as part of this. And they're cost-driven because it's divided. You may feel that based on the costs, you only want to do external versus external plus internal or building A plus building B. So Chad has that for us to take a look at here.
Yes, I can go ahead and share that if that.
And that was discussed, I remember now, we did discuss that during the informational sessions discussing this, appreciating the fact that we don't necessarily need to do every single building all at once. We could phase it in. And we may want to do that to have some parallel systems running if need be, but that's helpful. Thank you.
Would any of this expense, can it be covered under the CARES Act? This is providing security at a time when the buildings are essentially on lockdown?
That's a great, that's always my first question too, Steve, is can we pay for this with CARES Act? Absolutely.
I can follow up on that question and run it up the flagpole, so to speak, to see if there's enough COVID-19 relationship. I can, I will find out.
Thank you.
Are you able to see the Excel table I have up?
Yes.
Okay, so as we mentioned, in the RFP, we asked for the project to be broken down per building so the board could consider either the project as a whole, or like Margaret mentioned, you know, just doing a certain interior, exterior, or different building. So Watkins was able to break that down. That's price per building. That includes labor, hardware, and any licenses that go along with it as well per building. There's a couple optional add-ons that they mentioned, and then annual maintenance, which indicated, you know, 50,000, which we would want to, there wasn't much detail on what the annual maintenance would incur and would include. So that's certainly something we are going to look into during the negotiation period.
That sounds good. So we have costs for some of the folks who are on the phone. We've got costs ranging from, you know, courthouse exterior and interior and Temple Court, courthouse annex, interior, exterior, also Willabank, interior, exterior. So basically, our larger buildings, we're looking at about 50, 55,000 for each of those. But some of the smaller ones, sheriffs, the MHID and transportation, a little bit less. So that is, that's good to appreciate. And again, are we looking at any, and I apologize, Chad, if you said this already, but are we looking at any cost going long-term in terms of software upgrades, or does this really, or is this just the hardware? And we, again, like during contract negotiations, we'll get into some of those ongoing costs, or do we have any idea of those at this point?
Yeah, so the top part of the table to indicate buildings, if the board selected to do all of the ones listed, it would be $399, $480 for the installation, for the hardware, for the software. And then the annual maintenance, we didn't get a chance to follow up on that, because during the interview period, we hadn't looked at the price. We didn't look at that until after we came up with a recommendation. So that's something we definitely want to ask, is that necessary, what all goes into that? And see if we can sort of pick and choose what goes into the annual maintenance on what we think we might need. But there is a hardware warranty, I believe it's three years on the products they are recommending, and a, I believe it's a installation warranty as well, for a year.
Okay, excellent. Okay. Any other questions, thoughts, feedback on this and entering into contract negotiations?
I'm good. I'll make the motion.
I will second the motion. All right, it's been moved and seconded to enter into contract negotiations with Watkins Security. And we will await word when that's concluded or there's check-in points, but we look forward to that. Any final discussion on the motion?
None.
Okay, hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. For non-personnel items, we would have the consideration of accepting a partner agency invitation. And this was, we tabled this from our meeting on Tuesday. And Margaret, in terms of an appointment, do we have a separate one at this point?
Yes, the recommendation is for the board to approve Ray Stalinas as the county's designated representative to the State College Connector Planning Environmental Linkage Study Group. And by so doing, and your approval of that, it signals to PennDOT that you, the county, we, the county, are a partner in that process.
Okay, thank you, Margaret.
I'll make the motion to appoint Ray Stalinas as our representative to the project.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, and we have another appointment, or nomination, I should say.
Yes, this morning, for your consideration, the appointment of Krista Davis to the PCor Board. And I would share with you that Krista, our Director of Risk Management, has served on the PCor Board for three terms, starting in 2015. It involves attendance at board meetings, three a year. And she's been very instrumental in working with that group to help advance issues that not only helped Center County, but all of the members of PCor. The board is comprised of 14 members, and seven of those members are up for reelection. If you were to nominate Krista to stay in this role, she would be representing counties of the fourth and fifth-class counties. She would be a fourth and fifth-class county representative. That's it.
So Krista, anything you'd like to share about this? We, not that, we love working with PCor, but sometimes when we think of PCor, it's when something unfortunate has happened and we need to file a claim. But it is a great group, is, you know, through our CCAP partnership, but anything you'd like to add or offer to this?
Yes, good morning. Thank you. And Margaret, thank you for a great summary. She's pretty much said most of this. I do really enjoy my time with the board and learning about other insurance losses. So sometimes we may not have an experience, but some of our other co-members may. And so being on the board helps me understand the insurance handling of a county from a whole. So I think it's just beneficial to continue to represent Center County and continue learning more. So if it pleases the commissioners, I'd love to continue the opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you, Krista. Would there be a motion for the nomination?
Gladly make the motion.
All right, and I will second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that?
I just want to say that PCor has been an incredible partner for Center County. They've been with us through thick and thin and really have helped us out through some very trying times. And I just want to put it on the record that we appreciate their partnership.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. So with that, all those in favor of the nomination, do so by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. All right, you're welcome. Absolutely. We have a discussion item, and this would be for the COVID-19 medical leave exception discussion. And potential action may come out of this, but we'll turn it back to Margaret for any introduction on this.
Thank you, and I'm going to just turn it right to Krista, and I think she has placed this on the agenda for today. So turn it over, Krista.
The leave directive, of course, was just updated today. But prior to that, certain departments and positions are excluded based on the federal regulations. Some of those, such as 911, DYS caseworkers, well, really, any of our caseworkers. This one will be specifically with COIS and our corrections officers, because those are essential employees. We have had, back in September, when one of the schools closed, we made exceptions for a caseworker in COIS and a corrections officer do have what's called EFMLA, the Emergency FMLA. What that does is allow employees to take time off to care for their children while their schools are closed, to assist with schooling, and obviously, kids can't be left home alone. So, or Julia gets called for that, too. So we have, I'm going to go over two corrections officers first, and then we have one in Julia's office that she would like to talk about as well. We have a CO Refner and a CO Miller. CO Refner is just asking for a few days here and there. His wife works at a medical facility, Medical Express, actually, that's doing a lot of COVID testing itself, working 12 to 16-hour shifts. So therefore, the days that she has to work, someone has to be home with their kids. She also is excluded from this and cannot take the time. So the warden is willing to take this exception in there. It is made clear to everyone taking this that this does not apply to any school holidays, not apply to weekends, anytime the kids would not normally be in school. Additionally, there's a CO Miller. He is the one that we had approved previously, whose wife works at, not in any medical center, and also cannot take time off to help care for the kids. So those are the two that, from the correctional facility, that we'd like the exception made for. And then we have one in Julia's office for a Lori Lynch. With the school closing this time, luckily, her husband has been out of work as well. So there's only been, she has stated to our office, I don't know how she has communicated with Julia, that there's only a few days here and there that she will need when her husband's at appointments that she will have to take, like doctor's appointments, that she'll have to watch the, won't be available, and will have to do the EL from LA time. But I will let Julia speak her opinion on this request.
Okay, so, good morning. I just wanted to say that my concern is not necessarily regarding this individual employee. It's really across the board. Because I feel that if it's approved for this individual employee, it should really be available to all my employees. And where it runs into issue for me is I have 23 caseworkers that are specially trained, that can only do a job that is necessary. So we can't just close down once COVID hit and say, we're not going to do the things we need to do. We're bound by law to do those things, and I only have 23 people that are able to do that. So additionally, you know, currently, our situation is such that I have eight of my staff that are out either awaiting COVID testing or are in quarantine. So that's already limiting me of my available staff that are able to do this necessary service. And I'm just concerned that if we allow one person, we really need to be able to allow everyone. And we cannot function if everyone is eligible. So we have been really creative and have been flexible in terms of allowing employees to alter their schedules so that they're able to both play, you know, be the educator in the home if they need to, as well as continue their caseworker duties. And we, you know, our agency is highly adaptable. My staff hasn't been in really in the office. The caseworkers have not been in the office day-to-day since we closed the Willabank. So they've made a lot of adaptations and are surviving. But the issue at hand, I really feel, is that if I allow it for one, I have to allow it for everybody. And so I don't think that, and again, we would not be able to function if this was allowed for everybody. Like I said, I have 23 caseworkers that are, have the specialized training and the necessary by law training to be able to respond to cases with COVID happening and my staff having been in homes, doing their job, interacting with the community since March, we need to continue to do that. So I really need, I need my staff to be able to do this, and I need my staff. You know, they've been really great about being as careful as possible, but like I said, I already, at this point in time, have eight people unable to do their job because they're either quarantining or waiting tests. And I fear that those numbers rise, and now allowing people to have EFMLA further limits our ability to have staff available to respond to the very necessary job that we have as essential workers.
The employees still would have the option of taking sick time with approval, personal vacation using that. It just wouldn't be under that protected EFMLA. So it's not that Julia would be telling this person, leave your children alone, because clearly, she can't do that. But she'd be calling herself. So, but it just basically, they wouldn't qualify for this protected EFMLA instead. They would only be, they'd be able to use their sick, their vacation, their personal time instead.
And again, we would be flexible to help them figure out a way to meet their own needs, as we have with all employees. For me, it's really about being able to be fair across the board, allowing this for everybody across the board who is eligible. allowing this for everybody across the board who is eligible. And, you know, not wanting to start this precedence, basically, not wanting to begin this. Because then I need to, if I'm saying no to this person, I would feel like every person here forward, who would come forward, I would need to say no to. Because it's really about consistency.
Krista, in terms of how this is outlined, I think it's very good. Yeah, one of the challenges, so to take a huge step back. One of the, one of the beneficial things about county government is we do many things. I think, and then the double-edged sword of that is that it also presents challenges to each department. And the fact that we're at, the Kate, or the fact that we have as many people out on quarantine, I think does make it a challenge for Julia. I think what would be beneficial is if we maybe regroup on this, take a, take just a few days to do some analysis of this. I think it is important for us to be able to give flexibility to our employees. However, I think the federal guidance was, or not guidance, but the law, was wise when it came to certain positions because it was basically saying these positions need to come to work, period. We can't grant them that. And so at this point, I would actually lean towards not making any amendments. Not because I don't think it's worthy of more discussion, but I think at this point, we just need to do a little bit more research into it. But I do think it is important discussion. So I would be very much in favor of taking a few more days to think about this, to work on it, look at some of our departments, how this would affect certain departments that we have. So I would just say if we could pause on it for right now, but either Tuesday or Thursday of next week, I think I'd be happy to, again, look at this further. So let's, if we could put a work session together Tuesday and then regroup on the 10th to take action on this, that would be my recommendation, my suggestion.
Okay, we can put it back on the agenda. We'll put it back on for next Thursday.
This is Mark. I was just able to join because the 911 Advisory Board Meeting ended early.
Hey, Mark.
I only caught the latter. Hi, Mike. I only caught the latter part of the discussion. So yeah, if I could have a chance to peek at it a little more detail as well. Also, Dale will have some very good news for us budget-wise, just a little later this morning, based on what happened in the meeting. Very, very good news.
Okay, all right. That's good. Okay. So Julia, thank you for your perspective. Kristin, thank you for bringing the warden's case to us. Let's do a work session next Tuesday and then bring this back on the 10th and we'll go from there. Any further discussion about this? Thoughts, comments? I think we're at a good place. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, Kristin. Appreciate it. All right. Anything else we need to discuss at this point? I think we are, I think it would be important for us to, at this time, adjourn. I'm just seeing if there's anything else. Yeah, let's look for, at this time, anything else to come before the board at this time. I'm thinking we're all good there, but I wanted to make sure we didn't miss anything. Yeah, okay. Any executive sessions to report, Margaret?
No executive sessions to report, but I do need to ask for the board to. Don't matter.
Okay, okay. All right, so are we good for executive session at this point then? We could just do it after the meeting here? Okay, and I think after everybody jumps off the call, we can lock the meeting and then hold an executive session. So before we do that, any questions from any members of the press at this point? Did you know our friends from the Express, Senator Daily Times are also on the phone? Any questions from either of them? Okay, all right. At this point then, we look for a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session at 11 o'clock.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. We appreciate it.